Mark, when you're ready, I'll start the recording.
Okay, thank you. We'll give it a minute here.
Mark, when you're ready, I'll start the recording.
Okay, thank you. We'll give it a minute here. Okay, Piper, if you're ready. Hello, good evening, everybody. Sorry, couldn't be there live. Welcome to the Hark regular meeting of October fifteenth at five thirty P M. It's a hybrid meeting at Rebecca Hall. And as a reminder, the purpose of Hark is to preserve, maintain and enhance the historic character, scale, architectural integrity and cultural resources of the town and the town historic landmark district. So present tonight from staff, I see Piper, Kristen, Darren. And Elena called me, she can't make it. So we'll take the board, we'll call Kieranin.
Kieranin Lanin.
Stacy Lake.
Matt Lee.
Bob Mather.
Andrew Williamson.
Elita Moderpa.
And Mark Shambaugh. Good. Do we have a approval for the minutes of our September seventeenth meeting?
I'll move to approve them, but I have a slight change. On the Carhenge project where it says Commissioner Mather recused himself due to conflict of interest, blah, blah, blah. I would like that to say due to a conflict of interest due to proximity.
Okay, so noted, Bob. So do we have a second?
I'll second.
Kieranin?
Kieranin, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Matt, yes.
Bob, yes.
And Mark, yes. Okay. Staff announcements, Kristen.
Sure, so I had a number of announcements, so I put it together as just a quick slides just to cover five different updates. I'll try to be very brief and I think this will help me move quickly. So starting from, so the five things I'm going to cover are the twenty twenty five Colorado wildfire resiliency code and the implications for our design guidelines and reviews. The Town of Telluride Comprehensive Plan update, preservation of rated sheds, CLG Annual Report and Hark Annual Report Status Update and Historic Preservation Grant Programs, Forums and Training Opportunities. So again, I'll keep this very brief. The twenty twenty five Colorado wildfire resiliency code, I wanted to bring you all into the loop early. The Senate Bill tw- twenty-three, one sixty-six, established a wildfire resilient resiliency code board to help enhance community safety and resiliency from wildfires through the adoption of codes and standards. And the board adopted the code on July first, twenty twenty-five. By April first of twenty twenty-six, the Town of Telluride is required per state to adopt the CWRC. And we will need to also amend the land use code and design guidelines simultaneously with that adoption of the CWRC to ensure consistency and implementation of the provisions of the CWRC. Then there'll be a ninety day grace period in training, preparing the building community. And finally, by July first of twenty twenty-six, the Town of Telluride and my department will need to comply with the adopted CWRC. So this is just a heads up, I'll show you the timeline that I picture for design guideline updates. But this will impact things like materials, you know, roofing, the, a number of elements of our design guidelines may need some revisions. Staff will do the first review and then bring that before you. So we'll work on this in tandem. Our staff will review the design guidelines, draft proposed revisions to ensure consistency and implementation of CWRC provisions. We will also research relevant resources and participate in regional and state trainings on the twenty twenty five CWRC. And in particular, for this staff will participate with the state Historical Preservation entities who are organizing trainings and programs in that regard as we all across the state need to come up with material lists and and other other updates across all our design guidelines. Then January, February, I picture Hark work sessions, one or two on the proposed amendments to the design guidelines, and then you'll make a recommendation to Town Council. And then by April first, so this will take place in March, Town Council will adopt the ordinance of the twenty twenty five CWRC, an ordinance for the land use code amendments and a resolution for the revisions to the design guidelines. And we'll do some trainings between April and July first for our builders, architects, engineers and contractors. And then we'll comply. So that was my quick update and again, looking towards January for you hearing more about it, more in depth at a work session. So Town of Telluride Comprehensive Plan, just letting you know, community members, all community members are invited to join in the Telluride Comprehensive Plan Community Input Roundtable on Monday, October twenty-seventh from five thirty P M. to seven P M. at Aha. Our consultants from Logan Simpson will be here. It's going to be very interactive. There'll be different topics. Everyone will move around and share their input on key themes for the town, including infrastructure and housing, community character, environment and recreation and economy. And just reminding you here, but also the community, that input is essential to ensure the plan reflects the community's shared vision and values. Those that make Telluride such a special place to live, work and visit. So I hope you'll you'll join in in that session and that others in the community will as well. And if you want updates on all the planning process, I can point you to the Engage page where there's a landing page for that project. Preservation of Rated Sheds, thank you to Mark and Bob for joining Historic Preservation and Planning Staff for an alley's site walk to evaluate the sheds in most critical need of maintenance repair to ensure the structural integrity of the these significant historic resources is preserved and to prevent demolition by neglect. This is something Mark mentioned at our last meeting and we were able to find a time that worked for all of us and it was terrific to to have Mark and Bob engaging with staff. And staff then met subsequently to review notes from the site walk and to determine the highest priorities for follow-up. Letters will be sent out by myself to three property owners this month that we identified as the highest priorities. And then Historic Preservation Staff with Darren as the lead will update the tracking spreadsheet with updated data and photos from the site walk and conduct further research on specific sheds identified. Thank you, Darren. And then CLG Annual Report and Hark Annual Report Status Update, this is number four of five here. Historic Preservation and Planning Director, oh, I am working on the Certified Local Government Annual Report, which is due on November third. I, as you know, this is still my first year in this role, so I'm learning and I realized very recently, and I would say very, very recently, that what I thought was the annual report that comes to you is different than the CLG Annual Report. So I've been working on that report for that deadline. But now see that there's a completely different annual report that comes before Hark. So I have reached out to leadership. I will be bringing that report first as a draft before the November meeting. And in the packet, you will review it and discuss it at the November meeting. And if you authorize it to then go to Town Council, I will be bringing it to Town Council in December, but I just wanted you to know that that's why the delay. I thought I was presenting the CLG Annual Report to you, but I'm not. And I did speak with Lindsay Flueeling today about a number of things, including some additional information she'd like for this year's CLG report. So separate annual report, I just mentioned the timing for that. And Town Council will see it on December sixteenth. And thank you for your patience with me this first year. Next year I will have have experience with everything and it will get very easy and streamlined. Finally, Historic Preservation Grant Programs, Forums and Training Opportunities. The State Historical Fund Grant Program, it has an April twenty twenty-six application deadline. We'll be seeking funding for an update to our Historic and Architectural Survey. In speaking with Lindsay, I'm waiting for that grant round because there is more funding available through that program versus the CLG Grant Program, which is a Sooner Program, and we are looking for an expansive survey update, so I'd prefer to wait and and ask for the the full amount. We're looking forward to do that work in phase one and phase two. Then there is also the Certified Local Government Grant Program with a February twenty twenty-six application deadline. It's a little delayed this time, this round versus prior years. Seek, we'll be seeking funding to support additional Town of Telluride Historic Preservation Priority Programs. I will give you an update on the details of that as that date comes closer. And then Forums and Training Opportunities. Our staff, Historic Preservation Staff, will participate in upcoming virtual forums and trainings hosted by state-level Historic Preservation Staff, including a regional forum in December focused on Historic Preservation and Disaster Resilience Planning, wildfire floods, and again, that nexus between Historic Preservation. There are a number of additional regional and state opportunities that Darren and I will join in on that Lindsay mentioned and is planning right now and other organizations across the state, not just on that topic, but more broadly. And then in the budget for this upcoming year in February, I have funding allocated for Historic Preservation and Planning Staff, our whole team to go to the Saving Places Conference so that we can all have that that learning opportunity together. And that's all I have, Mark. I figured I'd put it in slides since there was a lot more than usual there.
Thank you. That was a good idea. And two, two comments. One, first of all, thanks for the immediate action on three of the eight alley sheds that were in decay and hopefully saving them from this from history falling into the ground with this expected incredible winter storm track that we're gonna get, right? But thank you for doing that and taking action. And then lastly, I thought the CLG report, the Hark-related part that we always saw, and there's a good template, I think Darren has seen him before, but in there from Jana, but I actually thought that was the same report that was then forwarded to Town Council. I don't remember ever getting a separate and different report for Hark only, you know, head our attendance and highlights of the year, if that helps, or I can talk to you offline if if.
Yes, I did locate that template and that's what made me realize that it's two separate reports with different data included. So I've started working on that one now and I'm finishing up the CLG one. Some of it does overlap, Mark, but it is two distinct reports.
Okay. Well, good, good luck with that.
Oh, interesting.
During the Hark update, annual report.
It might be that now they have an online form, so you actually have to go through. It's like a grant application form that you're sort of filling out.
Good. All right. Well, thanks, Kristen, and and thanks, Darren, for your hard work on that alley survey, just so the board knows. This was not obvious. Some buildings, we didn't even know when or how they got to where they are. But they look to be of historic significance or during the period of significance, so they're tracking them down, but it's it's not as black and white as as maybe we all thought. So it was great to have the whole staff there. Okay, publicly comment on non-agenda items tonight. Please electronically raise your hand if you'd like to comment on non-agenda items. And Piper, if you could be my eyes in the room, is there anybody that wants to speak?
I see no one.
And no one electronically, so we'll go ahead and do we have our process slide?
Yes.
Kristen? Okay.
One moment.
Just remind the public of our process and we appreciate you helping follow it. So the Hark Chair introduces the project. Staff gives the presentation and answers the board's questions. And then the applicant will give a presentation which we asked to be thirty minutes or less, then the public gets to make comments, which we ask three minutes or less per person. No dialogue is permitted between the public and the applicants and and the board. The applicant can then address any comments made by the public in a rebuttal, public comment ends and then Hark deliberates and votes. So that's it. So our first two public hearing items tonight are extension of the C A. So I would only suggest, Kristen, since we, this has become so routine, and if you just read us the highlights, probably don't need to go all through, at least on both of them, of each and every reason for a C A., but I'll I'll leave that up to you. The first one is the two, two fourteen South Fur Extension of the C A. and Associated Vested Property Rights continuation without discussion from our September seventeenth meeting. It's consideration and application for extension of the C A. eleven oh six-two for large-scale new construction within T H L D per Land Use Code seven two oh three A three B one and recommendation to Town Council for an extension of associated vesting property rights per Land Use Code section five two oh six four seven. That's by the chair. It's lot eight R F K A S two lot eight and N two lot ten block twenty-three, Town of Telluride. And the rest of that description is written legally. It is at two fourteen South Fur. It's in the Commercial Zone District. The owner is P L K West two LLC A C O or a company LLC or Colorado LLC. Applicant Alpine Planning Staff Member Kristen Clothea. Kristen?
Thank you, Mark.
Kristen, before we start, I need to recuse myself for conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll be back for the next item.
Excellent. Yes, thank you very much.
See you in ten minutes. Okay.
Okay, so this item, noting that it was continued without discussion to this meeting due to absences and recusals which resulted in only two Hark members being able to hear the project on nine seventeen twenty-five. So it was continued without discussion. I will let you know as well that this particular item that I'm bringing forth is in two parts. The first part has a motion by the full Hark Board and then the second piece is just for the Hark Chair, but I'm doing them together because it it makes sense that they would be contiguous because the next step after that would be to Town Council. So I'll get into that more shortly. So it's an request, a request for a three-year C A. extension for certificate of appropriateness number one one zero six two. The original C A. was for a large-scale project and it was issued on twelve fifteen twenty-two, so it's due to expire on twelve fourteen twenty-five. The C A. was modified through the C A. Amendment Process under C A. Amendment Number One dated nine twenty-seven twenty-three. So you all know the background. I'll go very briefly through this. For any development that was approved, the C A. is granted for a period of three years. The Land Use Code authorizes the granting of an extension for up to three years. And extensions are granted by the reviewing potty, which granted the initial final approval if all the criteria have met. So this is large scale, so it's coming before you. So this is just the the background language from the code noting that you know, the applicant must demonstrate legitimate need to delay the start of construction, including inclement weather, financing difficulties or other similar factors. And then the second piece of this presentation is to do with the note here that extensions of a vested property right may only be granted by the Town Council in accordance with section five two oh eight of this title. And an activity plan extension as awarded by Hark may be subject to changes in the Land Use Code absent a corresponding extension in a vested property right. So this application meets the criteria. I will say there are two criteria to that must be met to grant an extension of a C A. The first one is Hark must determine if the approval is still consistent with the current design guidelines and design considerations. And if the applicant has demonstrated a legitimate need to delay construction. And number two has been met as the request for a C A. extension was submitted on August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, at least two months prior to its expiration. The applicant has provided a narrative that describes unforeseen circumstances that have arisen, including high interest rates, high construction costs, regional shortage of qualified contractors. And the applicant also notes the impacts of the economic and real estate slowdown. The the project was originally reviewed and approved pursuant to the twenty fifteen design guidelines and the twenty twenty-four design guidelines apply to this request. I very, I went through very carefully a comparison of the twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-four design guidelines. And those that were relevant to this particular project that had revisions made between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-four are the five listed here. And my determination, staff determination, is that the project is still compliant. There weren't significant changes to the design guidelines that would make it non-compliant at this point in time. If you'd like me to go through these, I can, but otherwise you know, I can always go back to this if you need this.
I think we're, we're, we're good and thank you for putting that in in red. Yeah.
Perfect. You know, just to to ensure that consistency. So the request meets the criteria for the granting of a C A. extension and a three-year extension is a reasonable request given the factors outlined and the large-scale nature of the project. So I have the motions for approval or denial here. And that's it for this piece, so I'm going to stop there for now and let the applicant jump in.
Thank you. And go ahead and share your screen, Chris, and I think it's pretty straightforward, but welcome.
I'm gonna keep this really simple and for once not share my screen. Kristen did a great job covering the reasons why. Hopefully it's understandable. It's just really weird times we're in right now. And so that's really the main reason outside of we already had huge pressures on construction costs and contractor shortages and combine that with everything that's happening this year. It's just a needed request, so appreciate your consideration.
Oh, that's the briefest applicant presentation I've ever heard. Well, thank, thank you.
Especially for me.
Well, but but questions, any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
All right, seeing none. Any public comment? Piper, nobody in the room? I I don't see any hands raised. Okay. So, I mean, to be consistent, we've been doing three years pretty much universally. And the only seed I'll plant is that don't forget about the efforts to save the tree. The last standing pine tree was in the condition, so I mean, six year, six years after the motion, I mean, maybe none of us will remember, except I know I won't forget.
New fire mitigation regulations may require its removal, but we'll try to save it.
Oh, okay, can't wait to read those. Okay. Any other board discussion? And if not, somebody want to make a motion?
I got it.
You got it?
I move to approve the request to extend the original certificate of appropriateness for number one one zero six two for two fourteen South Fur by adding an additional three years to the current December fourteen, twenty twenty-five expiration date of the original C A. based on the following findings, one through three as stated.
Matt will second.
Okay, let's vote.
Kieranin, yes.
Matt, yes.
Bob, yes.
Elita, yes.
And Mark, yes. Very good.
Yay.
And on the extension of vested property rights, Kristen kind of downloaded with me before the meeting on this, so Kristen, go ahead if you want to give it over you, but I'm I'm not going to have any questions.
Sure, really briefly then, applicants requesting an extension of the vested property rights for the C A. Staff analysis is the Hark, the Hark Chair, I'm asking the Hark Chair to make a determination as to whether to recommend to Town Council that the vested right also be granted, an extension. If the Hark Chair makes this recommendation, then this request will be considered by Town Council at a publicly noticed Town Council Public Hearing per Land Use Code section five two oh four. And I won't get into all the what a vested property right is unless someone has a question. I have this here for reference. And the request for an extension of a vested property right by Town Council is based on a number of factors, including the size of the project, the current economic cycle that has negatively affected the real estate market, high interest rates and exceptionally high construction prices. Extension of the vesting in concert with the C A. extension will provide the applicant with the time needed to move this large-scale project forward. A recommendation by the Hark Chair is required in order Town Council to consider this request. So I have the motion there, Mark.
Okay.
Okay, comment.
This, the other reason we're asking for this, in the past, this really wasn't done a lot, but I think it's a good policy to do it just to protect your property rights is because the citizen's petition that's pending before the town right now, citizen petition three hundred. We don't know how that's going to affect this property and that was really the bigger impetus for it. It will not prevent the town from applying laws that are needed to protect public health, safety and welfare. So like new building codes or new fire mitigation regulations or whatnot would still apply to the property as they're adopted. So.
Okay. And as I don't remember this step in the last ten years, it's triggered by the three hundred issue?
No, it it's part of the code. It was just discouraged by town staff in the past, and I think it's good to keep the vested property rights with the extension because there could be new rules or regulations that come along that would affect this. Like, let's say the affordable housing mitigation standard goes up.
Yeah.
Then that would completely mess with the project design because it's very, it's tied to a T to what's in the plan set today. And so.
All right, good, good. Any public comment? Seeing none. I move to recommend that the request to extend the vested property rights associated with the C A. eleven oh six-two for two fourteen South Fur by an additional three years be considered by Town Council at a publicly noticed Town Council Public Hearing period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, thanks for the brief presentation.
All right, we're rolling. Two oh one East Gregory. Surprise, a C A. extension. Consideration of the application for an extension of the C A. eleven oh four-four for small-scale new construction within the H Pod per Land Use Code section two oh three, seven two oh three B three B one. Its legal description is lot, lot nine and block B North Telluride addition to the town accommodations to plat recorded twelve thirty eighteen ninety-nine at zero two six one eight nine County of San Miguel. It's a two oh one East Gregory in the Hillside Transitional Zone District owner K L B. Interest Limited, a Texas partnership applicant, one architect, staff member Darren Candelaria. Darren.
All righty, thank you. First, I'd like to make a quick correction. There was an error in the memo incorrectly listing one architect as the applicant when the correct applicant is Jack Weston Architects. All right, this is the consideration for an application for a two-year C A. extension for a small scale new construction at two oh one East Gregory. There are two criteria that must be met for a C A. extension. Number one is for the Hark Board to determine if the approval is still consistent with the current design guidelines and if the applicant has demonstrated a legitimate need to delay construction. This project was approved in twenty twenty-two pursuant to the twenty fifteen design guidelines. The design guidelines have been modified since the project was approved. The board must determine if the approval is consistent with the twenty twenty-four design guidelines. The applicant provided a narrative stating that along with the recent purchase of the property in twenty twenty-four, adjacent construction and budgeting have delayed the commencement of construction. Construction is now planned to start in twenty twenty-seven. Hark must determine if the applicant has demonstrated a legitimate need to delay construction. Criterion number two is the application for a C A. extension must be submitted two months prior to expiration. Criterion number two has been met as the request for the C A. extension was submitted on August eleventh, two months prior to the original expiration date of October eleventh. Due to an internal administrative error, this application was unable to be properly noticed in time for the September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Hark meeting. For this reason, the Historic Preservation and Planning Director granted an administrative C A. extension of one week, extending the C A. expiration date from October eleventh to October eighteenth to allow the applicant's request for a C A. extension to be heard at this October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Hark meeting. Staff is recommending approval of the request as it meets both criteria. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board?
I have a quick one. Just they're asking for two years and we did three years for the other one.
The the applicant has requested two years.
Great, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, any comments from the applicant? Okay. Any comments from the applicant?
Uh, yes. Jack Weston, yeah, Weston Architects Inc. Really, the, the amount of construction that's around this site is really kind of driven it. I added a photograph at the end of the package as it's just kind of. Indicates houses on both sides and across the are all under construction. And it's a very, very tight street, really no staging. So. That was the primary reason, more so than any other reason. And the two year, I'd love to have three years if you're okay with that. Two years is when we thought those projects adjacent to this would be completed. We didn't intend to delay anything. Uh, if, if you're um, willing to give three years, that's great. Um, two years is what I ask for. Thanks.
Mark, we can't hear you.
Oh, he muted himself.
Oh, sorry. Any questions of Jack?
Nope.
Okay. Um, any public comment? Okay, let's deliberate. You know, we, we've talked about this before, how many years, but we've been traditionally given three years. Um. Let's have anybody has a problem. We don't, we don't like to go piecemeal two years and then one more year later. So. Are, are we good with three or what's the board's pleasure?
Three's good.
It's good. Okay, who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Uh, I move to approve the request to extend the original certificate of appropriateness, uh, number one one zero four four. For two oh one East Gregory by adding two years, sorry, three years. To the October eleven twenty five, uh, twenty twenty five expiration date of the original C A based on the following findings. One through three as stated in the staff memo.
Give her a second.
Okay, Kieran.
Yes.
They see us.
Matt, yes.
Bob, yes.
Mark, yes. Excellent. Unanimous. Good luck. Thanks, Jack. Okay, our final, and I repeat, our final public hearing item of the evening. At. Six o'clock is the Fulton Residence. Consideration of application for small scale new construction. That will contain two thousand five hundred square foot or more of Floria and. Small scale new construction of a principal structure in the Hillside Traditional Zone District on a lot with a pre-construction greater slope with the building site coverage. Of twenty five percent or greater regardless of floor area per land use code seven tool three B one three. Legal description is lot seven, block E, north tell you right addition to town tell you right accommodations to, to, excuse me, A C C to replay it. To replat the recorded uh, September fourth to twas twenty four at four eight six two five eight S M C. Colorado. Address T V determined. It's the Hillside Transitional Zone District. Owner T O Rico LLC applicant William Irwin and staff member Darren Candelaria.
Alrighty, thank you, Mark. Has the board been able to review the public comments submitted for this application?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
This is for the consideration of an application for a small scale new construction on lot seven R Tomboy Road. Project named Fulton Residence. This will look somewhat familiar as it came before the commission as a work session in October of two thousand and twenty four. Lot seven R is a vacant lot located on a steeply sloped site on the southern side of Tomboy Road. Some trees and shrubber, shrubbery exist on the southern portion of the lot in addition to a large rock. Lot seven R is in the Hillside Transitional Zone District and developing Hillside Treatment Area. Staff conditions one through three and seven all relate to the mass and scale as well as materials for the proposal. Condition number one is to revise the rooftop deck. The rooftop deck on the eastern end of the primary structure does not step down at the hillside edge. Contradict, contradicting the natural topography of the slope. This makes this portion of the building appear larger and out of proportion with the rest of the building. Condition number two is to revise the primary facade with a break in wall plane or a variety of materials. The primary northern facade's total width is fifty nine feet. Fifty two of the fifty nine feet on the northern facade is unbroken. With no change in wall plane or divisions created with a variety of materials. Condition number three is to revise the material and material finishes. Eliminating aluminum, creating differentiation between the primary and secondary as well as the walls and foundation. The proposed siding material for the entire primary and secondary structure is horizontal cedar siding. Because the siding encompasses the entirety of both structures, there is no distinction between the two structures. Or the wall and foundation materials. Condition number seven is similar to condition number three. Calling for the treatment to the exterior wood siding on the primary structure as there is no treatment proposed. Conditions four and six involve revisions to the parking pad. Condition number four is to minimize the height of the retaining walls with stepping or terracing. And change the material to convey the character of a rock wall. One retaining wall measures over six feet in height, exceeding the four feet limitation set in the design guidelines. The proposed board form concrete material is appropriate for low walls inside or rear yards. However, it is an inappropriate material for the front. Condition number six is to better blend the parking area with the natural colors and textures of the region. Though texture is proposed with the board form concrete, this is an inappropriate texture for the front yard. Condition number five is to revise the four pack door opening to a grouping more similar to what was seen historically. On the southern elevation, there are two four packs of sliding glass doors. This large cluster of glass is a larger grouping than what would have been seen historically. Condition number eight is to revise the lighting plan to remove duplicating fixtures and sconces on the second level. And to have all fixtures downlit. Finally, condition number nine is to provide a more detailed landscape plan with a plant schedule and re, revegetation plans. Staff recommendation. The proposed structure for lot seven R Tomboy Road falls on the smaller side of the scale regarding mass and scale. Though there are few conditions, though there are a few conditions from staff about mass and scale. These conditions can be solved with differentiation in materials. The primary structure is only two levels high and barely visible along the street. However, the large rooftop deck is a concern for staff. Outside of these concerns, staff finds that the application is substantially compliant with the design guidelines and therefore recommends approval. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Darren. Um, questions for Darren?
I've got one question, um, kind of related to um, the letter that was written by the neighbor and the stair placement. Um, it seems to me that the stairs need to be pulled into the setbacks. Because they are elevated structures and not a part of the landscaping or site retaining walls, site features. So I just want to make that comment and see if you considered that or if you had any other, or if you disagree with that or.
It was not something I had considered before, well, during writing my memo, but. Is an interesting consideration given the public comment. I. Would, in just being honest, I would say I'm torn as staff.
Okay. That's my only question, I think.
Other questions? Okay. Then let's hear from the applicant. If you come on up and share your screen and introduce yourself, please.
Uh, my name's Matt Fulton. I'm gonna, I'm the actual resident. Um, Will is joining virtually. I believe he's on.
He's gonna share his screen.
Okay, yeah, he's gonna share his screen. Yeah, Will. So I'm just gonna act like for consideration, like I'm not trying to build something to, you know, minstrosity. I'm not trying to build. I've. I'm trying to move my family here. This is uh, I have a three year old, a two year old and a five week old. Um, and it's like, we've been part of this town for so long. We want to move here. You know, with the, with my Joyce Allred's, my, was my grandmother, with the passing of her. It really now inclines my wife and I to move here to raise our family. Um, and we are lucky enough to be able to, be able to do something here. And so we're taking that opportunity and. With consideration, please understand it is honestly, it's a, it's a family home. We're not trying to build a six thousand. We're not trying to do something huge. Uh, we're not trying to get variances to big, bigger, turn it, whatever. So that's, that's my thing. I'm, I'm terrible at public speaking, so sorry.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Will, go ahead.
Hello. Yes, hello, everybody. Uh, thanks, thanks uh, for that uh, project summary. Um, I think, you know, I'm sure you guys have seen the application package. I just wanted to point out, you know, we, we did a preliminary meeting. Um, a little over a year ago and we tried to really uh, incorporate a lot of the comments. Um, that, that everybody had specifically, there was a lot of um, concern about how far the previous design projected. Um, from the hillside. So, so we did make a, an effort and, and we did in fact. Kind of nest the building more into the hillside um, by a good margin. We also reduced the size of the exterior patio decks. That was another concern. Um, that the Hark members had. Uh, so we implemented that. Um, I believe previously, a, and, and as far as the comments um, from Darren. You know, I think we can accommodate all of those things. I think previously the, part of the reason we made the materials the same is that was, I believe that was a request. So they, that the buildings sort of seemed to be cohesive, the, the, the additional uh. You know, accessory building or guest unit versus the main residence, but we're, we're more than happy to distinguish the materials on those if that's, if that's. The preferred option. I would also like to point out on the rear side, so the front yard is essentially. I wouldn't say invisible, but nearly invisible because we've located this house lower than the road elevation. So a, a very small amount. And I can kind of show you uh, the elevation here. This is essentially what you'd see from the roadway, which is basically just the railing. Of the rooftop deck. So a big portion of that elevation that is um, solid essentially. Is, is not really visible from anywhere except the approach on the road if you're looking down the hill. Um, so I think that's something that's important to note. Additionally, that stair that you mentioned on the side. Is also lower than the road elevation. So it's, it's kind of stepping down from the parking area to uh, to the main entry of the residence. Um, so it, it, it is also uh, not significantly visible. Um, lastly, there was some comments at the previous meeting um, to kind of. Uh, compare um, this project to other projects in the area and, and, and contextually sort of analyze it. So we've created a sheet. You probably saw that in our packet or maybe reviewed it already. Um, where we sort of compared our design and, and project to other homes and or approved designs in the area. And I think we found that it's pretty compatible um, on, on many fronts. Um, you know, including some that do have visible piers, the massing of it. Um, and the materiality. So I think that that's uh, again, something that, that. You know, we took your comments seriously and, and provided that information. Um. Other than that, I mean, I think, you know, it's a tricky lot. As you guys can see, the road bisects the lot. If I, if I flip to the site plan, site plan quickly here. You can kind of see what's happening where the road actually bisects the lot. That does make things challenging for us when it comes to parking and siding the home. The benefit though is we do have a, a, a good location for a rock fall fence north of the road. Um, you know, so I think that is, that is the positive side of having the road bisect a lot the way it does. Um. We're making an effort to sort of maintain these, there's a large uh, rock and boulder on the site. We want to maintain that, of course, as much as possible. It's a, it's a great feature. Um, and also some of the existing trees. We want to maintain the, uh, native vegetation as much as we can. Um. And I think that's really it. That kind of hits the high points.
Well, thank you, Will. Uh, questions, questions from the board? Okay, uh, hearing any, um. And I do remember this actually from a year ago, but I don't have any questions either. Um, and, and I do see some changes, so thank you. Um, let's hear from the public. Any public comment? If you're out there electronically, I see the author of the letter, uh, please raise your hand. At this time, if you'd like to speak. If you go to the more button, usually you can get to hand raising. Um, anybody out there in the public who wants to speak?
There's no one in the room, Mark.
Okay. I saw the author of the letter. That's why I thought maybe he did, but. Okay, well, it speaks for itself. Uh, it's very detailed. So with that, I'll begin deliberations. And um. Yeah, I guess as normal, we'll uh, look at one through nine and then the other conditions. But on one through nine. Does everyone agree with Darren? And then we'll talk about any additional ones if there are some. Whoever wants to go first?
I'll match it. Could you go to the um, uh, one has the building sections? Yeah, A six hundred. Yeah, I think the first thing that jumped out at me when I, when I looked at this was that the second level. Is projecting. In front of the lower level. And I think typically we're looking for a stepping back up the hill. So I think that's uh, something that we should add to the uh, conditions. That the second level should be. Um. See what direction am I looking at? Uh, north of the lower level. You can see it there on that lower photograph or lower rendering. Yeah, so it slopes with the hillside. And I think that Darren's comment about breaking up the facade a little bit more. Uh, needs to happen, definitely.
I love that.
Um. Other than that, I think she did a good job uh, covering. What we're looking at. And I can find the condition for that. What if everybody agrees?
I agree. If you want to look, Bob, or maybe somebody knows it.
I can jump in. Mark?
Yes.
I, I think this project still is fundamentally not grounding itself into the hillside. It's. Perched on the hillside and using piers and columns um, to hold it off the ground. So I think it's. It's, it's not. Embracing policy number seventeen. Sorry, policy number um, sixteen here. Um, and so I think that's kind of a fundamental flaw that it has. Um, I would add a condition that says instead of using piers to perch the massing over the hillside. Ground the massing into the hillside and step the massing down at the edges per D H seventeen A one through six. Um, in addition to that, I would modify, so Darren's conditions one through nine. I would leave all of them. I would modify condition number one. To say steepen the slope of the primary roof and reinforce, sorry, to reinforce the slope of the hillside and significantly. Reduce the size of the rooftop deck. Per D H seventeen, D H seventeen A, D H sixteen A four and S L two intro. Um, so I think those two things along with um, Darren's comment. Number or condition number two to. Um, significantly break up these wall planes would bring this project into much more compliance.
Uh, I just want to clarify, um, you said seventeen policy, that's the roof form. Sixteen is the mass scaling form.
Yep, yep. So I'm, I'm saying to revise number one, I think that the, the, the low slope of that pitch is not. It's not um, blending in with the hillside. It's too flat.
Right.
So it's steep in that pitch.
And then the stepping back would be sixteen.
Um, sixteen. A four, step buildings down at hillside edges. So I think that's, I think this came from maybe Darren's condition. Yeah.
It's in there?
Yeah, I kept, I kept that citation.
And can we combine that? Bob, your comments on A six hundred by pushing back the north.
Yes.
With number one then, I guess.
Yeah, and I think it should be A one through six.
Oh.
Further stepping back. Further stepping back.
Okay, sixteen A. Is six?
Oh, sorry, you're right. I, I, I meant to say sixteen and not seventeen.
Definitely got seventeen for the roof form.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
My apologies.
I think you're gonna read this one.
Okay, everybody, everybody good with this revision number? I mean, it's the main thing when you look at A six hundred, but look at A four oh one. A four oh one tells the story in a colored rendering. But, 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 but is there anything else? Uh, I mean, you, um, Matt or Bob that you?
The, I, I think the stairs do need to be moved within the setbacks because they are elevated structures. They're not a part of um the landscaping or the site features. We've, we've allowed steps and setbacks when they're integrated into the landscape, but these are, these are elevated structures.
I agree.
You got a condition?
I just said move elevated stairs within the setbacks. It's really a land use code thing and not a
Yeah, okay. All right. Let's go around the table. Who else?
Oh, Mark, I'll go next. Um, yeah, at the risk of repeating what Matt just said, I think having that house on stilts maybe solves the drainage and erosion um impact. But as a result, it, it's in direct contradiction with the introduction. Um, blending with the hillside to preserve, preserve, preserve the natural image, it, it struggles then to do that as a result. And I know that there are other stilted structures on Tomboy Road, but I think they're just parking, flat parking levels.
Yeah.
Which, which are then
On one oh six east tomboy has quite, quite tall piers that are visible.
Yeah, on sheet A one oh one, we're not allowed to during deliveries.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I thought he was asking.
No, it was a rhetorical question, sorry.
A one oh one, they're not the skinny piers, but they're columns and maybe that's part of, I don't know.
And there, there's space behind it.
Well, but, but in addition to that, it, the in the applicant's narrative, they described a two-story structure, which is not factually correct. It's three. There are three. It reads as three. The foundation below those piers is exposed and it's three. Not only is it three, but it's three in a, in a vertical plane.
Um, stepped the wrong way.
There need, to me on the hillside, and we've seen this in other DH projects, there needs to be a stepping back and up, stepping, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, that may wreak havoc with, with the, the structural design and whatnot, but that is what it is. Um, I do also want to though, this is different. It's the same guidelines, but it's different. To me, the east and the west elevations are completely unarticulated. There may be perhaps as flat an elevation as I've ever seen.
I agree.
Um, so there needs to be something done. I mean, I'm surprised, I'm surprised you don't want Sunset and Ingram views, uh, because they're not available currently. Um, but that, that would be the same sixteen.
Yeah, so I, I have been there and stepped down the massing at edges. So that's what I, you know. But I think combined with Darren's condition to articulate sods and the wall planes.
And, and you're saying add some windows? Never heard that one.
Well, I didn't, that's not what I said. I said I was surprised.
Okay.
I don't know that, Mark, have you ever seen an east, a west elevation with not a single window?
Not in my tenures. But we don't want to tell them what to do, but certainly.
But that would articulate the elevation.
Yeah, yeah, that would help.
I agree with all Stacy's comments. Um, I think the north portion only has one window, small window as well.
Well, agreed. I'm a little less concerned with that one because just to get the, the basis of the streetscape. I mean, they're street level, there's not a lot of opportunity for windows there. Anyway, and in the winter, they'd be buried in snow.
Okay, especially this coming winter. So I hear.
Um, but I also wrote down, um, curious what people think about the width of the upper south facing deck. It spans almost the whole building. There is a little bit of articulation in it, but it seems like it needs to be broken up further.
I had that as well, Matt.
Go to that elevation. You're talking south?
Yeah.
Yeah, south face.
Yeah.
The footprint jogs one time, but it, the whole thing is the entire width of sixty or so.
I, I remember being in the room when we added this new um uh item, a new uh design guideline of significant articulation or setback. It's, it's versus seven inches in one spot. So but my question is to both of you, Karen and Matt, so if they set that back a couple feet to divide it up, are we okay? I mean, I don't know a guideline that says you can't have a deck that long, but are we saying if they step back the building, the deck's okay? I just want to make sure when we get to the
So on the, the lower level, the deck is broken up into a couple, at least two different sections, if not three. Um, on this upper level, it's the entire width of the building. So I feel like it needs to be broken up or significantly revised inside.
Like the first floor, okay.
Yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And I also want to add, I mean, we, I, I, I am suggesting that we, that they, they move away from this pier concept that's perched on the hillside. It doesn't mean that portions of the building can't have piers or columns or decks or small pieces of the architecture, but I think the whole, the, the primary form needs to be grounded with the hillside.
Yeah. Agree.
I guess I don't really have much more to add to that. I was just gonna say, to me, it also obscures the stepping back with the way it's designed currently. If I had more of a jog or something to break it up, I think that would more reinforce, reinforce any stepping back.
You're talking about moving the second floor back.
Correct.
We all agree about that.
Mark, I'm sorry, I do want to correct something I said earlier. I said there were, you know, this was in act, in, in reality, a three, a three-story project. I, I zoomed in much closer to the image and maybe it's my failing eyesight, but it's, what I saw as a third wall plane is, is, is ground without snow on it. I apologize.
Yep, got it. Thank you. Other comments for the board? Anybody else want to weigh in? Or are we getting consensus here uh around a couple of these new conditions and supporting Darren's?
I, I wanted to make a comment and wanted to see how the rest of the board feels with condition number six. Since um, from the way I read it, the parking platform, the deck is actually steel mesh and it's permeable. And the board form concrete is actually just surrounding around the stair. So I believe that condition number six should be eliminated. And basically, the condition that speaks about the height of, so number four takes care of that board form concrete wall and its height and the material. And I wanted to see how the rest of the board feels about that.
Six is talking about the surface of the area, right?
Yeah, and it's actually metal grade. It's not board form concrete.
Hmm.
Hmm.
Good point.
But is it, where is it called out as metal grade?
You know, it's actually on C, it's actually on the civil drawings. On the civil drawings, C.
Drip, okay, I see it.
Yeah.
And we asked the applicant to confirm what their intention is for that material.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and break strike. Um, Will or Matt, can you comment?
Yeah, no, our intent was for the parking surface to be permeable. Um, so snow didn't accumulate and we could kind of route the drainage around, but the board form concrete, she is correct, board form concrete was the sort of surround for the stair that goes down to the entrance.
So we, we agreed to delete number six then?
Yeah, it's deleteable.
Agree with that. Okay. All right.
And Mark, I also have one more comment and I was curious about, again, what the rest of the board members think. Um, I was confused about um condition number three in regards to aluminum, because the, the windows and doors that are being called out are our standard aluminum clad wood windows that we use all the time. So I don't see that as a, just like aluminum material unless I'm reading this wrong. So I believe that condition should, um, should remove the aluminum um, and section E three.
Just looking at if there's something else here.
Well, first of all, I don't
There's something else.
The window spec that's there from Western Windows is an aluminum window. There's no wood cladding. Um, that's just, I'm not saying.
Does low in aluminum cloud?
Well, I may say that, but the windows, there's, there's how many pages of window specifications at the end of the document?
Yeah, on the legend, it's color bronze, anodized.
Hmm.
Uh, anodized, anodized.
See matte black on the windows and doors.
Aluminum clad wood color.
I think the, the, probably the thing about aluminum is we just can't have raw, bright aluminum. We have to have painted aluminum.
Hmm.
So as long as it's a painted aluminum, it should be fine.
So what are we gonna do with the word eliminate? Change it to make sure it's painted?
Okay, so it will be painted.
I think we can just strike and eliminate, sorry, and eliminate the aluminum.
Okay.
Those, those, those words.
All right.
And E three.
Okay.
That's condition E three with aluminum.
Good, good, good points, Alita. Thanks. Thanks for looking at the civil drawings on the parking.
And we're taking off six, is that correct?
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Okay, yeah.
Anybody else? Then we'll summarize before we get to motion, see if we're all in consensus here. Okay, so, so what, what I've got on Darren's one through nine and then the additional ones is let's just cross check. I've been trying to take copious notes. Uh, first of all, we're gonna move to continue. Um, and, and Kristen, what date? And well, then we could ask the applicant, but what date do we have opening? And then we'll ask the applicant, because that's, that only leaves them ten to twelve days to get it back in and there's some pretty good mass and scale changes here. Any preference, Kristen?
I, Mark, I would recommend December seventeenth.
Oh, okay, Darren, thanks. All right. Twelve seventeen, yeah, because in ten days, that, that's a lot. Um, but I would, I just noted on one through nine that besides eliminating six and eliminating the on number three, the part about aluminum, um, are we agreeing that we significantly re-revise on number one? Significantly revise the size of the deck and on uh number two, with significant breaks in the wall plane. I know we heard his talk, but we can't have the seven inches or a foot. It's not going to be enough. And I don't want to waste their time. Can we, can we use at least the word significantly unless somebody wants to specify?
I think Matt had, you had that, didn't you?
I, I didn't have any um revisions to number two. I would be fine with adding the word significant, but I, I think the, the overall mass and uh scale changes I'm asking for in this um new condition number ten, I think would potentially take care of that, plus Stacy's comments and Bob's comments.
And you changed one, you added?
I added number ten and I'll, I'll read it again. Instead of using piers to perch the massing over the hillside, ground the massing into the hillside and step the massing down at the edges per DH sixteen A one through six.
What about stepping back this, the building itself?
Um, I think we could add that.
We should add that. That, that can go there, right?
You.
Yeah, that's sixteen.
Let me work on that.
Can I ask a question? Turn that not loud. Well, if it's a topic that we haven't given you
I just curious if that, I don't know, you know, I'm completely wrong. Does that mean I have to dig out more of the earth to push it back? Is that what we're, we're looking for?
Depends on how the design works.
Okay.
But most likely that's a typical solution. And, and again, the, again, we're not supposed to have dialogue, but I'll just repeat what the board said that that, you know, on porches and so forth, seeing some piers or columns is more common than on the main structure. And I think Matt's, that's when he's saying grind, grounded into the hillside. It's versus piers, it's speaking of the main structure. That doesn't mean there's not, you know, some piers somewhere, but um, as Matt's, go ahead, sorry.
Mark, I just want to add, I think the discussion about cut fill is, is final. Like, I mean, it's, it's when the project's complete. In other words, we don't want big areas cut out for, for a flat yard or a big area cut out for a terrace. Or the other, the flip side of it is a big, a big, a bunch of fill mounding. Cutting out for a foundation, once the house is finished, is, is not as, not perceptible. So it's, it's the final, final cut fill, not necessarily the cut fill excavation that's required for construction. Is that?
Yeah, good point, Stacy. Yeah. Um, and while Matt's still writing, but yeah, Matt, if, I think even though you're gonna cover it, if on number two, if you could add significant breaks in the wall plane, I remember our discussion when we rewrote these. I think that'd be good. But there's one we haven't talked about. The land use code, our decision to set back the accessory building, you know, he's proposing nine, it's fifteen. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board? Well, what do we believe in this application, the set, proper setback should be?
I, I think given the constraints, the site's kind of cut in half by tomboy. And, you know, this, this isn't a large project and they are not pushing up against this maximum site coverage. I think where they positioned the accessory structure is fine.
And it's
Okay.
And it's down.
Yeah.
Break up the massing of being in foreground of the building.
Okay. So we're fine with the nine feet unless anybody else continues. We're gonna have a condition of pulling those stairs in, within the setbacks. And then east well, east-west elevations is another one where we ask them to articulate. And then, I guess, the south deck breaking. Well, I don't know if they break up the building, maybe that solves the problem of that, like, like that's on the top versus the bottom. Uh, Matt, as you're writing, I guess you're getting drafted to, to do the motion here.
Um, change two to say revise the all of such. Yep. Hold on one minute, Mark.
Okay.
Um, should I make a motion or make an attempt to make a motion? Is anyone else having more discussion?
Well, is there any more discussion? If not, I think we should attempt to make a motion.
Okay, um, bear with me here. Um, I move to continue to the December seventeenth Hark meeting, this small-scale new construction at lot seven R Tomboy Road based on the staff memo dated October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five with the following conditions. Number one, revised to say, steepen the slope of the primary roof to reinforce the slope of the hillside and significantly reduce the size of the rooftop deck per DH number seventeen, DH number seventeen A, DH number sixteen A four and SL number two intro. Number two, revised to say, revise the facades with significant breaks in the wall planes and use a variety of materials to minimize the apparent width per SL one, B one and two. DH sixteen and DH sixteen. Number three, revise materials and material finishes to create a distinction between the primary and secondary structures and a distinction between the walls and foundation per DH twenty-two A one and two. Number four and five as stated, strike number six. Uh, seven through nine as stated. At a new condition number ten, instead of using piers to perch the massing over the hillside, ground the massing into the hillside and step the massing up the hillside and down at the edges per DH sixteen A and step the massing up the hillside and down at the edges per DH sixteen A one through six. A new condition number eleven, move the elevated stairs within the setbacks per the land use code. And a new condition number twelve, significantly reduce the width of the upper south facing deck per DH number sixteen. And I'd welcome any friendly amendments or corrections.
Think you got it.
Well, friendly amendment, did we, uh, I guess some of this referred to the east west elevations needing to be more articulated? Uh, or is that why we said all facades? I guess, on number two.
Stacy was maybe going to add a friendly amendment about finestration on the east and west facades if he wants to.
No, I I just had, I just indicated the math that sixteen and seventeen don't apply to a single facade. They apply to all the facades. That's all. And he covered that in his revision.
Okay.
All right.
I'll second that.
Kieran.
Kieran, yes.
Stacy, yes. Matt, yes.
Bob, yes.
Mark, yes. Well, thank you and good luck. We'll see you in December. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that?
And, and I'm gonna note after we close public comment, moved on that the author of the letter finally raised his hand, but we, we gave the public time and and, uh, and its continuation is, at least in that letter, they requested, so. Well, we spent an hour here. Um, I guess we, uh, oh, we do have something else. Kristen.
I already spoke earlier, Mark, to say that I would be bringing, um, the annual report for Hark forward in November and I will provide you with the draft in advance. So I'm gonna let Darren take it away with the Hark Preservation Awards.
All right, Darren, this is one shining moment every two years, right?
Yes, I'm well, Mark.
Drum roll. Okay.
I think, can we take a break for a moment, Mark? Is that all right?
Sure. Two minute break. Okay, are we ready to resume with the awards? Darren? Can you hear me, Darren?
Wait, we were waiting on Alita. But she's here, we're ready.
Okay, fire, fire away.
Alrighty, so this might be the longest presentation of the evening, but hopefully it'll be a little bit more fun. So, established in two thousand and eight, the Telluride Preservation Awards are presented periodically by the town of Telluride and the Historic Architectural Review Commission to recognize those who have contributed to the preservation of Telluride's National Historic Landmark District. Eligible project criteria. Eligible projects must have started after January first, twenty twenty-one and be completed with a certificate of occupancy received prior to May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. All categories are open to residential, commercial, or mixed-use projects. The Town of Telluride Preservation Awards Program is open to any individual organization, business, or agency within the Town of Telluride limits. The same applicant may be nominated for more than one building in the same review cycle. A property owner may nominate his or her own building. Applicants, if not the owner of the property, must provide written consent. For judging, nominations are evaluated by an evaluation committee composed of Hark members who have no role or interest in the nominated projects. A property owned by Hark, P and Z, and Town Council members may be eligible for an award during the member's active service. Such member may not act or influence the evaluation committee. If the evaluation committee feels that the nomination is better suited for another category, then the jury may change the nominated project to that category. All the evaluation committee's decisions are final. Additional materials may be requested. The evaluation committee may grant multiple awards within the same category on a case-by-case basis. There is no established minimum or maximum number of awards that be gr- that can be granted in any one category. All right, so there are four categories which an application can be nominated. Category number one is rehabilitation and restoration. Rehabilitation involves returning a project to a condition which makes contemporary use possible while preserving its character-defining features. Rehabilitation may also include the adaptive reuse of a building. This category acknowledges the proper restoration of a raided structure to an earlier or original appearance. Projects must fully demonstrate adherence to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Category number two is most compatible addition. To acknowledge a compatible addition and alteration to a raided structure which respects the defining features that characterizes the property and that best meets the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilit- for rehabilitation, number nine, new additions, exterior alterations or related new constructions shall not destroy historic materials that characterize the property. The new work shall be differentiated from the old and shall be compatible with the massing size, scale, and architectural features to protect the historic integrity of the property and its environment. Category number three, most compatible infill. Infill is defined as a building that is designed to replace missing structures or otherwise fill gaps in the streetscape. This category will acknowledge new construction projects that architecturally and aesthetically complement the historic context of the existing neighborhood. And finally, category number four, continuing preservation is to acknowledge raided structures contributing or supporting that have been continually maintained with a high level of preservation over time. Darren, I'm just gonna let him go to you. That's fine. Sorry. There is one nomination for the rehab, well, first category, rehabilitation and restoration. There is one nomination for the rehabilitation and restoration category, the Voodoo Youth Hangout Shed at one five one South Willow by C C Y Architects and the owner Town of Telluride. The applicants stated in their nomination that this project not only preserves the historic structure in the heart of Telluride, but it also greatly enhanced the public benefit the structure provided to the community. The shed had most recently been used for storage by the Town of Telluride. A cornerstone of the project was the preservation and restoration of the building's historic character. The original wood siding was carefully removed, catalogued, and reinstalled after the addition of a modern continuous insulation, enhancing thermal performance without compromising authenticity. Inside the shed, the, inside, the shed underwent complete remodel to create a dynamic interior environment suited to academic, creative, and social activities. The photo on the bottom right of the slide pictures the shed, the shed prior to restoration. Category number two, most compatible addition. There was one nomination for the most compatible addition category, two eighteen North Willow by Tommy Heine Architects. The applicant stated in their nomination that two eighteen North Willow represents a careful, considered approach to expanding one of Telluride's oldest residential structures. The McClellan House dating back to eighteen eighty-three nestled within a neighborhood of predominantly historic homes. This project balances preservation with progress. Navigating the constraints of scale, site, and modern living needs to deliver a seamless, respectful addition that enhances the that enhances the existing house. Uh, the existing house modest footprint enriching character proposed an immediate challenge. How to add necessary square footage without visually overpowering, overpowering the historic structure? The solution, the solution was grounded in difference, deference. Setbacks, material differentiation, and a gentle massing strategy ensured the addition remained subordinate, both visually and spatially. The photo on the bottom right of this slide shows the historic house prior to the addition. For category number three, most compatible infill, there were three nominations. Three, six, nine, East Galena, five forty-six, West Pacific, and seven thirty-one Shadow Lane. These were all by Tommy Heine Architects. For brevity, I will move on to a staff recommendation for this category. Staff recommends that the evaluation committee nominates five forty-six, West Pacific for the most compatible infill category. In the applicant's statement of significance, they state, five forty-six, West Pacific demonstrates how a modern home can contribute to the character of a historic neighborhood thoroughly, through subtly sensitivity and precision. Set on the compact lot with direct agency to a historic structure that encroached on the western property line, the design team responded with not with avoidance, but with architectural generosity, turning a potential challenge into a defining opportunity. Staff agrees with this sentiment and finds that five forty-six, West Pacific blends well with the historic district and neighboring historic structures while remaining subordinate yet distinctive enough to be clearly seen as new construction. For category number four, preservation or continuing preservation, there are two nominations. Five seventy-five, West Colorado and four thirty-seven, West, West Colorado. Both were done by Shift Architects. While both nominations are great examples of preservation, staff recommends nominating five seventy-five, West Colorado because of its prominent location at the entrance of the historic district and layers of alterations the structure has undergone while still maintaining integrity. The applicant states for their significant, statement of significance. Five seventy-five, West Colorado, Colorado was originally constructed in nineteen thirteen and holds historical significance within our community. During the nineteen eighties, a number of non-conforming additions were made to the structure, altering its original character. Over the past eighteen months, these additions have been thoroughly removed as part of a comprehensive renovation effort. The front facade has now been meticulously restored to reflect its original nineteen thirteen design. This sentiment can be seen in these photos on the slide depicting the structure starting from nineteen eighty-six through to present day. Okay, now that we've gone and reviewed through all the nomination, nominations, we'll go through them again and vote. Um, just as a reminder, the evaluation committee, any nomination category can be changed. There can be multiple awards awarded in the same category and there is no minimum or maximum. So we'll move on to the first category rehabilitation and restoration with the nomination in one, five one South Willow. How would the committee like to vote?
You wanna just go down the row, uh, Kieran?
Um, yes. Stacy, yes. Matt, yes.
Bob, yes.
Mark, yes.
Great.
Good job.
Does everyone wanna vote?
Sure, we should. Yes, it's not a public hearing.
Wonderful, unanimous.
Okay.
All right, and the second category, most compatible addition with a nomination of two eighteen North Willow.
I just I think it, I, I think it's okay, but I don't think there's enough photographs to really tell me how they work together. It's, obviously, it's a, a different material in the back. It's macerie in the bottom and dark wood on the top. I just don't feel comfortable that I'm seeing enough of it to say, yes.
I mean, I agree that the photo of the back is what's missing and that's what we're voting on. But I have walked by here. It's a, was a European family and I will just say this, they got the word subordinate correct.
I will say it may be also my choice in photos in creating this slide. My purpose was to show you the historic versus what is current. You are always welcome to request more information and I could probably provide that for you too.
Bob, would you suggest that in the future we kinda get a, a list that we can walk by and see for ourselves before we're asked to? Judge?
Yeah. I can't remember when we, I've done a bunch of these, uh, awards my, my tenure. And, uh, I can't remember if we had everybody take a walk or not. We didn't do it together, as far as I recall. I guess, well, I see what everybody else thinks. I don't, I don't recall this house that well to, uh, make a decision.
Well, let's look, let's, okay, Bob, so that's, that's, you're saying undecided at the moment, uh, due to the so let's go down the line and see what we get to here.
Um, I'm good with it.
I, I'll say, given the photographs that we have on the screen, it seems like a, 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 a great project for compatible additions. So I would say yes.
Mark, say yes.
I'm gonna say no, just 'cause I don't feel comfortable about it.
Okay, Andrew, Lisa.
I know the project and I vote yes.
Really hard to tell about that addition right here.
Your vote may not matter.
Vote doesn't matter, so.
And, 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 so I think we have enough votes. I would say if I hadn't walked by it and didn't know it, I would agree with Bob. I mean, if you haven't seen it, you, you wouldn't know from this photo, but I think we have the majority as a yes.
Yeah.
Category three.
All right. Category three, most compatible infill with three, six, nine, East Galena, five forty-six, West Pacific and seven thirty-one Shadow Lane. How would the committee vote?
Aaron. Her recommendation was five, four, six.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with five, four, six, and I think a case could also be made if we're gonna win more than one for seven thirty-one. I don't, not as hot on three, six, nine.
Say that again?
No.
Kieran is voting for the one in the middle and the one on the right.
Right, if we are gonna do award to which we are allowed to do.
Right, if we are gonna do award to which we are allowed to do.
Okay.
I I I agree with Kieran. I would award it to um. To uh, five, four, six, and uh, seven, three, one.
Mark can only vote for five, four, six, and I think it's actually very well done and adjacent to the historic. Structure, so five, four, six is my vote. We'll see what everybody else thinks.
I agree with that. I walk by it every day, it's just down the street from my place, and I think it fits very nicely. So five, four, six, West Pacific.
And Mark, I'm gonna have to have you recuse yourself from this particular vote, I believe.
No, I'm not voting. Oh, well, I'm not voting for seven.
I don't think you can vote at all.
Oh, not at all. Okay, scratch my vote. That's fine. I do, I understand.
I'm going to vote for five forty-six West Pacific, Miss Eliza.
Even though I was part of the cell for five forty-six, can I still vote on it? But I would also like to nominate, if I can, seven thirty-one.
I can need to recuse yourself from the category of voting.
I think we're split then. As far as like seven forty-six unanimous, but also nominating seven thirty-one.
I'm not going to map for any of it, so.
I'm only hearing consensus on five or six.
Okay, all right, and then the last one, um, your recommendation was five seventy-five West Colorado.
Yes.
Kieran?
I could see both, but I think five seventy-five is better, so I vote for that one.
You can vote, Stacy.
Well, I think, you know. Both of these projects preserve the historic structure. And they do so well by. Keep, you know, they do all the things supposed to do. They're keeping the historic, you know, fenestration, they're keeping the the period detailing.
The additions were pretty subordinate compared to other projects.
Right, I mean, I I would vote for them both.
I would agree to vote for both.
I vote for both. I vote for both as well.
I vote for both as well.
Mark votes for both.
Woo-hoo, unanimous. Alrighty, that's all. Thank you, guys.
Darren, Darren, really good job, and it was the fun part of the meeting this evening, so thank you. We'll end on that high note and adjourn at seven PM, Mountain Standard Time. Have a good evening.